I noticed that.
Oh, my goodness.
So this is one of my board members, and this is South Ternabi, this is superintendent for personal parts. And this is also one of her board members.
All right. Good evening, everyone. If you would make your way over, if you're going to join us. Welcome to tonight's joint Hackensack Rochelle Park and South Hackensack Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for those in our school community that have are sick and and those that have lost someone recently. Maybe seated. As we start our meeting, let's pause to acknowledge that the Hackensack School District occupies all three districts occupy the unceded ancestral lands of the Ramapo-Muncie-Lanape people. We are all grateful to be able to learn, work, and gather today, and we continue our commitment to support all underserved and undervalued members of our school community. As a reminder, please speak slowly to our so that our translators and interpreters can follow along and make sure that everyone who needs it can be served tonight. All right, Ms. Singh, will you please do a roll call?
So the representatives for sending districts official ones are not present, so I'll proceed to our board members. Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Ms. Pringle?
Present.
Ms. Somerville?
Present.
Mr. Stein?
Present.
Ms. Cordiero Alton?
Here.
Mr. James Vickery?
Present.
We do have a core.
Fantastic. Thank you. Dr. McBride, if you will welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is well. On behalf of Hackensack Public Schools, we'd like to give a warm welcome to some of our honored guests today for our joint boards meeting. First, we have our superintendent from Rochelle Park, Dr. Sue de Noble. Thank you for joining us. Trustee Elaine Reynon. Thank you as well. South Hackensack, we have Jason Shirachelli, superintendent, as well as trustee Salvatore Tonambi. Again, welcome.
All right, we will start tonight with our student report. Shanika Thomas will start the report.
One, my name is Shanika Thomas, and I will be presenting the November Student Board Report. On Friday, November fifteenth, Coach Mario Santa Vines and several of our cross-country athletes went to Fairmount School to assist with their annual mini marathon. The student athletes provided encouragement. Sorry about that. I'll start over. On Friday, November fifteenth, Coach Mario Santa Vines and several of our cross-country athletes went to Fairmount School to assist with their annual mini marathon. The student athletes provided encouragement, ran with the elementary runners. Okay. Once again, on Friday, November fifteenth, Coach Mario Santa Vines and several of our cross-country athletes went to Fairmount School to assist with their annual mini marathon. The student athletes provided encouragement, ran with the elementary runners, and congratulated the students as they completed the marathon. On Thanksgiving morning, our annual Hackensack Teaneck football game will be held at Teaneck High. Events include a parade that begins in Teaneck and involves clubs, bands, and activities from both Teaneck and Hackensack. The parade begins at nine thirty and the game begins at ten thirty. On December fifth, the student government will be hosting their annual homecoming dance in the East Wing Gym. On December sixth, our dance team will be hosting a holiday dance showcase at six o'clock in the auditorium. On December eleventh and twelfth, the high school will be hosting our annual parent-teacher conferences. Conferences will be held in teacher classrooms, and it is a great opportunity to see how your child is performing in their classes. Comet ambassadors will be on hand to assist with directions and elevator usage. Thank you.
Thank you. I must apologize. I was so excited to hear from Ms. Thomas that I forgot to actually call the meeting to order. So let me back this thing up. Yeah, so in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the record, posted in the board office, and filed it with the city clerk. And now hereby call this meeting a regular public meeting, well, actually, a joint public meeting on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four in the Hackensack High School Media Center, and we actually started at six eighteen. I did look down. And we already did our roll call, so now we are actually in business. Now, please excuse my error. Our next report is building a comet community. All right. Jimmy Montesano.
Oh, wait, we got a ticker.
It goes in its snipe.
Good evening. My name is Jim Atasano. I have the distinct pleasure of being the Hackensack High School principal. Believe it or not, I'm a proud alum, but I'm also in my fifteenth year as the high school principal, which, you know, kind of scares me a little bit because I feel so young and spry, but you know, sometimes the mirror tells me otherwise, but tonight we're gonna, I'm excited because this is always one of my favorite events. We, it's a great opportunity for us to showcase just a different little aspect of Hackensack High School. One of the real benefits of having a large comprehensive high school is there's really something for everyone. And it's an exciting time for me, kind of as a proud papa, so to speak, to kind of show off, you know, some of our best assets, which are Hackensack High School students, which you're going to see tonight. So what I would like to do is just get beginning with the program. Shay, can you tell us what happened on November fifteenth? Or no, I'm just kidding. So first of all, welcome to the Board of Educations and Administrations from Hackensack Rochelle Park and South Hackensack. We thank you because I know how busy this is, especially as we kick into the holiday season, so we are very appreciative. But the kids are very excited to kind of present to you tonight and show you, you know, some of the great things that are happening. What I'd like to do is just start with, this is our agenda for tonight, and what I want to do is really just talk about what makes, how we build, so to speak, our comic community, and one of the ways we really do that, which really just enhances their curriculum is through our clubs and activities, and we're just gonna have a small sampling tonight of some of our clubs and activities. You can see how they, you know, represent themselves, not only in the school, and they're such a tremendous asset, but also in our comic community as well, which is inclusive of South Hackensack Rochelle Park and Hackensack as well. Again, I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful team of administrators with me on a daily basis. We've been together a long time, but sorry, Ms. Lozano couldn't be here tonight, but she's our grade twelve assistant principal. Ms. Nicole Adams is our grade eleven assistant principal. You can give a little wave. There you go. Bob Greenwood is our grade ten assistant principal. And Selsa King is our grade nine assistant principal. So before we begin with our medical club, I think it's really great when you, like I said, when you do have a large comprehensive high school, they really, the clubs and activities do play such an integral role into developing the students' personal, social, and academic achievement. The importance goes right extremely beyond their classroom setting, but it also functions in an extracurricular engagement. They contribute in various various aspects of growth at Hackensack High School. Our clubs build social skills and friendships, which you're going to see tonight. It was funny because I was soliciting students to kind of come and help, and can my friend come too? Come, you know, more the merrier, so come on. So we went from having about six students to about thirty-six, but yeah, it'll be quick. It also enhances their academic performance. I think when they have a connection to their teachers that goes beyond just a traditional classroom setting, it really does just enhance their experience at Hackensack High School. You're going to see tonight they're tremendous leaders, and they really do strive when it comes to teamwork. It enables them to explore some of their passions, such as the medical club and some of the other activities you're going to see tonight. It helps with their emotional well-being and their confidence. You're going to see very confident speakers this evening. But overall, I think the biggest thing it does for us as a school, it really engages and enhances our community engagement and service through volunteerism and social causes, and fosters a sense of responsibility and the importance of giving back to our local society. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the wonderful advisors that we have who of all of our clubs and activities, this is just a small sampling, but in particular, I'd like to thank the ones who are here tonight, our medical club advisor, Ms. Vicky Shaw. Our common ambassadors, which we're going to showcase as well, Ms. Sandy Harrington. Our culinary group, which is Mr. Kelly Carroll. And LASSA, which is our Latin American Student Association, which is Stephanie Moreno and Saraya Gonzalez. So without further ado, I'd like to call up our medical club.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Christina Fong. I'm a twelfth-grade student and president of the medical club. I originally joined the club because of my interest in emergency medicine and my goal to become a doctor in the future.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tiana Ortiz. I am a twelfth-grade student, and I'm the secretary of the medical club. And a reason why I joined the medical club was because of my interest in endocrinology.
All right, so we're just going to start with the rundown of the club. So we work with medical students to provide information about their journey into the medical field and kind of give more informative ideas and information about students wondering about this career. And they can answer like any questions you have, and they have many cool and informative hands-on activities for the students. We also work with fundraisers to help raise money for some charities like childhood cancer illnesses, et cetera. We take field trips, including to the medical school and speaking with different guest speakers, which may include like doctors, nurses, and any other people working in the field. So this club overall helps students explore their medical entrance and interest and what may be right for them. So for some of our community activities, we have Slam Dunk the Junk, which is helping clean up the community by picking up trash around the neighborhood. So we included some photos of the students and walking around Hackensack, picking up the trash. And here we're working with some of our medical students, and they're teaching the club members how to perform CPR. So they did bring in dummies, and we got to work hands-on with the students. And then here we have the more medical students, and they're explaining the importance of blood pressure, how to work a blood pressure cuff and the categories. So very informative, very helpful and useful life skills that everyone should know. And here we, the students took a tour of the medical school, the newly built Hackensack Meridian Health Medical School. It was really nice and really new, so it was a lot of different technology that we got to explore. So here, this is during the tour, we got to use some of the optic devices, cardiac devices, and things like that. We got to test a lot of the things, and they taught us how to use them and the importance as well.
So this year, we have been collaborating with both with both HMHMH Medical Students as well as Jackson Avenue School to spread our knowledge on the from the medical club to different communities.
And overall, that's what we have so far for medical club and more of the informative side about what our club does and its purpose, and thank you guys for tuning in.
Mr. Montesano, do we have a working relationship with the hospital?
I was just gonna actually say that it's been so enhanced lately. They've done such a great job. They've welcomed our students in. We have a couple of things set up with them shortly. But they really have advocated, and they really have kind of, well, you know, we've welcomed them in, but you know, they're they're coming, and their medical students are great. They really do a great job with our kids. It's, you know, again, we have a beautiful, you know, medical facility right next door. It's, it was the brain trust, I want to say, of Ms. Vicky Shaw, but a couple of years ago, she started the medical club, you know, they could fit in her classroom, which was ten, twelve kids. That is no longer the case. We had to move them to either the cafeteria, the auditorium, or the library, because it's, you know, sometimes up to, you know, sixty, eighty kids per meeting, so it's a great opportunity for our students. Next, I'd like to welcome up our competent ambassadors.
Hi, me and my peers are from Comet Ambassador. My name is Babitu Truwalii. I am in twelfth grade, and I am currently attending Hackensack High School.
Hello, my name is Shanika Thomas. I am also in twelfth grade, and I also attend Hackensack High School.
Hi, my name is Salome Ariave. I'm a junior at Hackensack High School from Hackensack.
Comet Ambassador is a school-based community service organization. Currently, we have seventy-five members strong, and it's basically open to all students, beginning second semester to second semester, ninth grade through twelfth grade. And new members have to provide two teachers' recommendation letters.
So what we do in the Hackensack High School community is the ninth grade orientation. In the summer, we do the eighth grade open house, which is touring of the school for eighth graders. We do back-to-school night, and we do parent-teacher conferences, which is direct parent, direct the parents and guardians throughout our buildings.
We also offer support for events throughout the district, such as the Hackensack High School Robotics Competition, the cheer competition, and Bergen County School Boards.
And throughout the district, we have contributed to Jackson Avenue Trick or Treat, Fairmont PTSA meetings, Nellaki Party Trick or Tray, and Jackson Avenue Trick or Tray.
I think they undersold themselves a little bit, but anytime we need a helping hand, you know, they are the first ones to volunteer. They're the first ones to participate. If you think about, I have high school students at home, and the last thing they want to do, the week, summer's almost over, is come to the school and give tours and give, you know, welcoming messages and mentorship to our incoming freshmen. Not only do we have, we send it out to the students, and we'll probably have seventy-five, eighty students who kind of show up, so I think that really is a testament to the group, but it's also a testament to the Hackensack High School community. Our next one is one of my favorites, because clearly I'm not starving, our Hackensack High School Culinary Department.
Hi, I'm Devon. I'm a senior. I'm in the Culinary Two Program.
Hi, I am Lorenzo. I am part of the Culinary Three Program. Our time in culinary has taught us valuable valuable life skills that can even be used on helpful resumes, helpful on resumes, and we do this while helping those in our community.
One of the things that we do as culinary is that for St. Patrick's Day, we feed senior citizens. It's part of our outreach program. It's part of what we do for the community of Hackensack and those around us.
We have done concession stands for various clubs. And in doing so, we have split the proceeds to help fund the clubs do their various activities.
A few years ago, we were one of the six schools in New Jersey during Hispanic Heritage Month, chosen to go down to Trenton to present and feed over thirteen hundred students, where we presented two Latin American dishes for them to eat, for them to consume. And yeah, just, you know, we were one of the very few schools that were chosen for that throughout the entire state of New Jersey.
We have put together meals and delivered them to dozens of families through throughout the Hackensack School District for those who do not afford the ones themselves.
Another thing that we do for Thanksgiving is that we work with CBH Cares to distribute over three over three hundred Thanksgiving meals to the underprivileged, to those who cannot provide for themselves. CBH Cares, they work with adults with mental illnesses. What we do is that while while their annual coat drive, we freeze and prepare Thanksgiving dinners to give to them, for them to take out with them as they pick up a coat.
In addition, we also make vegetable and fruit platters, as well as charcuterie boards that we distribute throughout the district of Hackensack to those in the nurtured program, such as teachers and school employees in the Hackensack School District. We have fed over nine hundred people.
We randomly receive donations from individual businesses and from people in the community, which we are able to use and donate to those in need. For example, here we were given, I believe, a hundred and fifty turkeys, maybe more. And for Christmas, we prepared them, and we gave it to those who could not afford for themselves, those who could not afford for their families in Hackensack. Families of students of Hackensack and well, those who are needed.
And then similar to those of the concession stands for the clubs, we also do them for our sports teams. Where and during these concession stands, we parents would have done this instead, but our program took over to help lighten the load.
Overall, we do football concession stands, track and field concession stands, and for the basketball tournaments, we also do concession stands for them. The proceeds, you know, we split them, and you know, both groups get to benefit from that. For us and culinary, you know, it's very good for us, especially because, you know, we don't always receive the funding that we need to reach other communities, to reach the people in Hackensack that we can help provide and donate towards. But that's why things like this is really good for us, because we can do those sorts of things for the community.
And last, but certainly not least, is our Latin American Student Association. Oops, our clicker went rehearsed.
Hello, we are from the Latin American Student Association, otherwise known as LASSA. I'm Marielle. I'm the co-chair for the club, and I'm a junior.
Hola, chicos. Mi nombre es Lizma Andres. Soy officer de el club de LASSA.
Hello, good evening. My name is Annalia. I'm a sophomore in this in Hackensack High School, and this is my first year in LASSA club.
Hi, my name is Yvonne. I'm also senior, and I'm the second co-chair of LASSA.
Hi, my name is Daniela. I'm sophomore, and this is my first year in LASSA club.
All right, so our club advisors are Señora Gonzalez and Señora Moreno.
Nuestra supervisora son la señora Gonzalez y la señora Moreno.
So LASSA was founded in two thousand thirteen, and basically what we do is we try to contribute to the school by spreading Hispanic-American culture, and we raise consciousness among all students at the school. Our club organizes a number of activities, including the Day of the Dead Walking Taco Sale, a holiday celebration, and as well as other activities that really contribute to the school's environment.
Nuestra misión como club es promover la cultura hispanoamericana, de tal manera que se pueda dar a conocer y entender, al mismo tiempo practicarlo y entenderlo de manera mutua. Realizamos ciertas actividades a lo largo del año para concebir una mejor comunicación entre nuestros nuestros compañeros y supervisores a la vez.
So we do do a lot of trips. One of our trips is going to NYC to do a walking tour of Spanish Harlem, which basically we learned about the art and culture of Harlem, and it really contributes to how we learn about our identities as Hispanic students in the northeast area.
Una de las visitas que realizamos es a universidades. De esta manera, cada una de las personas que forman parte del club pueden tener cierta noción acerca del futuro que les depara y puedan entender de cierta manera cómo es ese ese trayecto y a la vez comunicarse con el club.
We also do, we also get a guidance counselor to come present scholarship opportunities to us, because a lot of scholarships are available for students. However, they might not know because they just aren't informed about them. So we get a counselor like Ms. Krenn from the high school and to present this usually at the holiday celebration, and it's really an informative session where we can learn about scholarships that can benefit us.
Como manera de recaudación de fondos, realizamos la venta del día de tacos y realizamos este año y el año pasado se realizó el altar, que es una representación de nuestras cultura, que cada una de las personas que componen el club comparte, y de esta manera se puede compartir hacia la comunidad y hacia los demás estudiantes del colegio.
We also do, as well as the walking taco sale, we also do the flower gram, which basically we sell flowers to students at the school, and it's a very fun event because we just pass around these flowers, and it's very festive and fun.
Como una de las oportunidades que ofrece el club es el senior scholarship, que se sortea de cierta manera el una ayuda principal para los estudios que parte los miembros quieren adquirir en un futuro.
We also do events like the eighth grade orientation, which is tomorrow, and we also do we are also in the footsal team usually, which is basically a soccer event where we like contribute, and we have fun playing soccer as well, and we support. Yeah, we also support it.
Este año se tuvo la oportunidad de traer un grupo llamado La Gringa desde Nueva York. Presenta una historia un dando interesante que justo tiene que ver con la temática del club y presenta cierta manera una conexión con cada uno de los miembros, no solo del club. Vas más allá del colegio y de la comunidad entera porque se invitó a la comunidad en sí. Y esto fue muy interesante y ojalá volver a repetirlo otros años.
We also contribute to the Slam Dunk the Junk event, which other clubs do, but we also do as well, and we do it twice a year.
En ciertas ocasiones invita a grupos, a personas que pertenecieron previamente al grupo, ya graduados, para que den una orientación a los nuevos miembros y tengan una noción más realista y próspera que puedan tener cada uno de los estudiantes y de esa forma puedan formar su propio futuro.
And that's it. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
The last event that they talked about really is a fantastic event. It's kind of a panel discussion for our students where they can kind of converse with some of our more successful alumni. It's great to see kids who have walked in the same halls and, you know, taken some of the same classes and been a part of the same clubs and how successful they are today. I guess it does mean I'm getting old, because when you see them, you can't believe how, you know, all my doctor, I'm, you know, but it feels like they were just walking the halls the last couple, you know, last week, so to speak. As I conclude, you know, I think our greatest asset really is both of our, is our staff, but it's also our students as well. So I am indebted to our students and staff and I just want to say thank you for presenting tonight and thank you for making us look great as always. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, students. We always, that's our favorite part is to hear from you all and thank you, Mr. Montesano and the assistant principals who are always right there with you. We will move to our superintendent report.
Good evening again. I echo those exact same sentiments. Amazing job to the staff and our wonderful scholars at the high school for showing their leadership. I want to start with first some great news. Congratulations to Mrs. Jenny Reema from Nellie K. Parker for receiving the exemplary educator award. This prestigious recognition is awarded to only a hundred and sixty teachers across the state. So special shout out to her. She'll be receiving our SOAR award for this month as well. To our wonderful, to our parents, you will be receiving our first standard space report cards with parent companion guides coming soon. We've transitioned from a trimester to a quarterly report card so that you have more information, more consistently around the progress of your scholars. So we are excited about that. Great job to Dr. Kaz Mark and her team for facilitating this, which is great. Want to also highlight many of our schools engaged in cultural celebrations, specifically around Diwali at our schools. For those who do not know, Diwali is a five-day festival that celebrates the triumph of light over darkness. So great job for all of the performances that we saw in recognition of this wonderful celebration. I've had the privilege over the past couple of weeks, myself and Mrs. Marks and Mrs. Parchment, to have some phenomenal meetings with our scholars and our teachers. And we want to celebrate our phenomenal scholars for being great advocates for themselves and articulating all the things that they need, but also highlighting all the wonderful things that are happening with them and the love for they have with their teachers and their, in their school community. Parents also, we, we just were at Parker the other night and so we had a phenomenal turnout for our PTA there at Hillers, as well as, we were at ECDC last night. And just literally seeing the, the passion and commitment of our families wanting to work with the schools to ensure their student success was wonderful. And so we are great to be in partnership with them. One of the things I received the other day, I want, an email from a very impassioned parent and it sparked something within me. The parent is not here tonight, but I'm quite sure she was here. She announced herself, so I won't tell who the parent is. She is the president, one of our PTAs. And she said that she was very excited about the three-year plan that I provided. She was happy that we were focusing on instruction first year, happy to be talking about data the second year. Wonderful that we're prioritizing special education and MLLs in third year. But she said, what is happening right now for special education? She said, and so I communicated to her that, that when we're talking about overarching priorities, that standards-based instruction is for all students. The focus is making sure that we have instructional practices that support all of our learning, so we're not leaving special education out. When we talk about data-driven decision-making and engaging in those conversations, we're looking at data specifically to making sure we can support each individual group of students, so they're still nestled in there as well as any other group of students. But she wanted something very targeted and so I heard her and I said, you know what, you're right. And so what I've done is that we're creating a special education task force. We are going to have representation from every school that may include parents, teachers, parents, administrators, who are going to get into the room and actually name the things that are priority around special education. And then collectively, keyword collectively, figure out what the strategy of approach to address specific problems and much like the beginning of the year when we had a list of things and knowing that they all are important, we won't, we won't be able to hit every single one of them, but the idea is for us to itemize and then prioritize from that list. And then we all commit to figuring out how we can address the challenges that we're having specifically around special education. So that meeting will be happening November twenty fifth and we are looking forward to those who will be in attendance to kind of have that dialogue. And lastly, before I actually begin the superintendent report, just want to give a special recognition of service to two members of Hackensack who have recently passed on. Mr. Bernard Kaminsky was a former principal of Hiller School and Thelma Smith, who's a former principal of Nellie K. Parker, who the auditorium is actually named after. We want to honor them and thank them for their service at Hackensack Public Schools. So now on to the actual, in student superintendent report. Our current enrollment is five thousand three hundred and five students. Our attendance rate is ninety-six point eight currently. As it relates to our residency report, for the month of October, we received five cases. Three were verified, two had in-home visits unverified and three had parent-provided updated in district proof of residency. For our HIV, for the month of October seventeenth, twenty-fourth to November the fifteenth, we had four founded cases, we had ten unfounded cases, totaling fourteen cases altogether. We currently have four pending and five preliminary determinations that are not HIV. And that concludes the superintendent report.
Alright, thank you. The board not only welcomes your comments, but wants to hear them. So all participants must sign in. When it is your turn, please state the following. Your name, municipality, group affiliation. If you list more than one, please clarify from which you were speaking from today. Each person has a limit of three minutes. Please direct all comments to me as the presiding officer. All responses that are appropriate to be responded to will be held to the end of public comments. We are ready. Alright, we have one person online.
Hello.
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 My name is Rosa Abreu. My niece is in eighth grade and I call in tonight because she has not had a bilingual teacher in her class, in her language arts, in class since September first. She's very upset because none of the materials is in Spanish. She has to use Google Translate to do the work in an eighth grade. Also, her friend in sixth grade also do not have Spanish material. Everything they have to do is in English and her sixth-grade friend has a bilingual teacher, but the material isn't in Spanish. So the teacher helped the class. My eighth-grade niece is not learning. How is the preparing her for high school next year? Why are these bilingual students working without books in Spanish? Does anyone care that these students have not had a teacher in materials for over four months? How is the pushing the rigor to superintendent mentioning last month in this presentation? What will be done about this? The bilingual students deserve better. Thank you for the opportunity to hear me.
Thank you so much. Any one else online? Anyone else here? So that'll be the end of our public comments. And any addressed to that?
Can you hear me? I see our MLL director here and I will make sure that we get in contact with the parent and address what was communicated.
Alright, thank you.
Yes. Want to say something? Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. I just want to share a point of clarification. The new HMH program into literature is not offered in Spanish as per se. However, almost every document that they offer, every text, every handout, every organizer is available in Spanish. Our multilingual coach is very present in that classroom, planning lessons, often modeling lessons and often teaching. She does teach in English, but the sub only speaks Spanish. So the class is predominantly provided in Spanish with Spanish resources in the seventh and eighth grade bilingual. So I just wanted to say that while Into Literature does not sell itself as a bilingual program, it has, I would say, eighty-five percent of its documents available in Spanish, which are made available to the students. I just wanted to clarify that point and that goes for sixth grade and eighth grade. Thank you. Happy news, we do have a bilingual ELA teacher on tonight's agenda. It has been very hard to, to contract somebody that accepted our job offers since May, when we had the retirement. So we're very happy about that. Thank you.
Alright, be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education determines it necessary to meet an executive session on Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-fourth to discuss legal, personnel, student-related matters, HIV reports, negotiations and other confidential matters and be it further resolved that these matters will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stein. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And there are none. It is six fifty-eight. Hopefully we will not be any more than an hour. We better not be more than an hour. Alright.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Ms. Pringle?
Present.
Ms. Somerville?
Present.
Mrs. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Kardira Alton?
Here.
Mr. James Vickery?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Let's approve our minutes. Be it resolved at the Hackensack Board of Education? Let me get that going. The Hackensack Board of Education approves the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four and special meeting minutes of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Ms. Pringle. Can I have a second? Mr. Stein, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would like to abstain on the October thirty-first meeting, since I wasn't there.
Okay, one abstention for October thirty-first from Trustee Harris. Any knows?
Still no. I'm still no. Or, I believe it was October sixteen.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have you as well.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Alright, now we will move on to our personnel. And then, same, Ms. Porter Outman, if you'll do personnel under the couple that we have to remove.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you to all that are still here. We are going to go over personnel, which is for A one through CC. However, we are also removing line items V one, nine and seventeen. So again, A one through CC to take action on and removing V one, nine and seventeen.
I would like to make a motion to table C seven.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to table C seven. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on tabling it?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. President James Vickery, I am online and I do not have the documentation in front of me. So can you please, one, let me know what C seven is? And I presume you guys discussed this in executive session for tabling C seven? So may I please get that explanation?
We did not discuss that. Legal and labor relations specialist is what C seven is? It is for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a central office employee and the effective date would be twelve-two and it's a new position.
So, one second. C seven is not a new position. We had already discussed and approved a labor secretary person quite a few meetings back, right? And we were just waiting on applicant to be selected. So that is not a new, I mean, not a new item. Whomever the person is, is maybe the new employee, but that is not a new item. That was already approved quite a few meetings ago. I'm sure we can go back and double check. We can go back and double check that one. And the second one is, I thought part of the discussion that we had was that if something is not discussed in executive session and is not brought up for the team, for there's a discussion, we would no longer be accepting remarks to table when we came to the floor. So is that a misunderstanding and did the rules change?
It was not discussed to table. You are correct.
So then the motion shouldn't be entertained. We had that conversation that if we are going to table things, we have the discussion in the room and they are removed from it, just like we were removing, what is it? I think V one, V nine and V seventeen, right? Discussions were had and there was an agreement that those were supposed to be removed. So the same thing should have been done for C seven.
There's a motion on the table. I think we should just go ahead and vote.
Well, no, no, I beg your pardon. I do not, I do not appreciate being shut down. I would like my question to be answered. So no, we will not be moving forward and just voting. Again, President Scott James Vickery, I am asking you, we have already had the discussion that we would not be bringing motions to the floor to have these conversations. They would be discussed in executive session. And if it's not discussed in executive session, the motions would not be answered. So if I am incorrect, that is fine, but please explain.
So the respectful thing is what you're requesting, but that doesn't seem to be the way we handle things, but I do not have the option to, since the motion is made, I do not have the, and it's been seconded, I do not have the option of not entertaining the, the motion per our attorney.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've had the discussion now. We will take a vote.
Okay.
Just so everybody's clear, this is to table C- Just so everybody's clear, this is to table C seven.
All right. Should I go ahead?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
That's the vote to table it?
Yes. Is it, are you in favor of tabling or not?
No, 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 not to table.
Okay. Ms. Pringle? Yes, the table? Ms. Somerville?
No.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, the table.
Ms. Cordier Alton?
No.
Mr. James Vickery?
No.
So we have one, two, three, four nos and four yeses to table.
No, five, one, two, three, we have five yeses.
Five yeses.
Hmm?
No. I have, I have, I have.
So Ms. Pringle, Carroll, one, two, three, four, five, the same crew. So we have five to four. So the motion passes to table. So C seven is tabled. So say it again.
Tabled on, so President Scott James Vickery, tabled on to when? Please put a timetable on when it is tabled.
We, I mean, we can, we can pick it back up right now if we choose to. We can pick it back up right now if we choose to. If someone wants to pick it back up this meeting, we can pick it back up this meeting or we can pick it back up at any time.
Okay, so then I make a mo, I, I make a motion to untable C seven.
Well, so I'm, okay, we have a motion on the floor to untable C seven.
Motion.
Okay, so we have a second. Is there any discussion? So I will, so I will say this. If it does not pass, Dr. McBride, I would recommend that you go straight to the county superintendent.
Yes.
Because this is a board that is strong-arming you into a position that we have already approved.
Yeah, it's embarrassing.
And that is the point, that is, that is the point, that is disturbing about this. This was already approved. If this was something new that just came out of left field, it would be something different. We approved this months ago. And we have gone through, we have gone through the process of hiring somebody. It is always humiliating and embarrassing to put stuff on the the agenda. We went through Personnel Committee, nobody brought it up to Personnel Committee. It is not in any of the notes or paperwork that you circle and Google dot that anybody had any conversation to do that. And to always come in and humiliate the district by constantly bringing stuff up that we have not, right, brought up before at meetings as grandstanding is just now borderline and just ridiculous. So I don't think it should be entertained and I agree a hundred percent. If you cannot get your, your actions or your staff past Dr. McBride, then take it to the county commissioner because this is ridiculous.
So we do have, this is where the board is overstepping.
I would like to motion to move forward from the topic.
Okay, well, you can motion when I stop talking, A. Well, I got all night. This is where the board is overstepping. We hire one person. That is Dr. McBride. He has full authority to hire the people that he needs to. We have gotten in trouble over and over and over for our legal bills. This is part of our corrective action plan that we have all been a part of over and over and over. So if, why ever, why y'all are stifling the district at this point makes zero sense to me. Other than you have some agenda that you're playing out now, makes zero sense. He has full authority to hire one hundred percent. When we, just let me be clear, you are crossing a boundary into personnel, which we do not have the authority to do.
Correct.
So I'm putting on public record.
This is a huge expenditure that we need and we owe it to the public that we are making right decisions. And if, and if, and if there are.
If you would actually do your work sometime, Ms. Harris, you never do.
Why?
Which is why you ask.
We would like to motion.
When, when I'm ready to. For at least one more month, sir, I am the president, so you will pay attention when I'm speaking. Thank you. Here's the thing. No, when I, when I'm ready, we will move forward. You can make motions all night long, but until I move forward is when we'll move forward.
So President Scott James Vickery, can you please have that?
Here's the thing. We will continue to stifle this district. The hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we are spending is a drop in the bucket to what we are spending in other legal fees. We pay Ms. Singh to help make this decision to get us out of this mess. She knows what the budget is for us to spend to be able to bring this amount down. This is part of the corrective action plan. Had you been paying attention all along, this, there, there's no reason that anybody should be voting no on this. So we have the motion on the floor to bring back C seven.
So as, as part of the motion, may you please ask Dr. McBride to explain? Since there seemed to be some confusion as to why, again, we had already gone over what it costs us for the Oprah request, what it costs us to reach out for counsel in order for us to be able to get it at three hundred and sixty something dollars an hour for multiple hours to be able to go back and do records review. What this gentleman is making for a hundred and sixty bucks is covered by a couple of Oprah requests at eight and ten thousand dollars a pop. So again, I am not understanding. So Dr. McBride, is there something that I am missing in this hire that we had discussed that we have already approved? That's to why now there is some conversation about fiscal responsibility when this is fiscal responsibility?
Trustee Somerville, those items were actually discussed and it seems that it had no impact on the individuals requesting that this be tabled.
So we agree.
It was also.
But I wasn't in, but I wasn't.
It was also completely disregarded that these, again, were job descriptions previously approved. So this is, this is not new and I appreciate you bringing up the items again that we know to be the issues and why the position is required.
So will you do a roll call, please, Ms. Singh?
Yeah, so the vote now is to untable C seven. Mr. Carroll.
What are we doing?
We're untabling C seven. C seven.
Untabling it?
Right, means that.
You can untable something?
Yes, yes, from the table, the same process.
Well.
To be able to vote on it.
So you're untabling it to vote on it?
Tonight.
Which means it's a yes or a no tonight.
Well, first we have to untable it because it was tabled.
So if we don't untable it, what happens?
Stay us on the table until, until it's either removed from the table or till the until the, the changing of the guard. Remains as old business.
I'm sorry, what, what does the changing of the guard means?
Meaning that when the board is, is essentially re-convened.
Oh, okay, thank you.
With the new board members.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
There's a meeting in December, right? So.
Yeah, anywhere.
Tabled.
Oh, yes, December, yes.
There's a December meeting, so it can, it doesn't have to be, again.
Okay. Marlene?
Yes, I, I'm, again, I'm a little, I'm a little disturbed that we're indicating, right, that because of political winds, we're tabling a school business to wait for a more friendlier board that is going to approve stuff that the superintendent, you know, or disapprove stuff that the superintendent puts out, right, for what is fiscally responsible for the district? Because certain individuals seem to think that they have the wind at their back. Again, this is fiscal responsibility. It was already approved. We have already gone through this. So I'm not understanding why now, when all we need to do is approve the hire that was already done, that there seems to be this moment of discontent that you're telling the superintendent what this responsibility is supposed to be.
That's a yes or no answer, isn't it? I call the question.
So actually, actually. Actually, Marlene had called to untable, but we didn't have a second.
We did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Missed that second. Thank you, Miss Alton second.
Okay, all right, so Mr. Carroll said no to untable, correct? Ms. Harris?
No.
No. Mr. Martin?
No.
Okay, Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
No.
Embarrassing.
Uh, Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stein?
No.
Ms. Cordier Alton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
So it remains tabled?
Mm-hmm. All right, so now we will move on to voting for the entire agenda. Who?
Sorry. So if it is going to remain tabled, the position was supposed to start December second. I motion that we, you could date today to revisit this because the employee was supposed to start December second.
It's embarrassing.
It's disgusting.
It is, it is. Scott, can I say anything at all?
I guess it's Scott's correct.
Wait, I need some sign. Okay. Repeat it, Lance.
Can I say, can I make, can I make a comment?
Can you make?
The position was set to start December second, so I'm asking, he set what time now to convene, to discuss it? So pause while Jackie answers that, please.
What's that, and I'm point, yes, you pause.
If, if you want to call a special.
Oh my, oh my.
Yeah, I have to.
This is embarrassing.
It's more than forty-eight hours because you have to notify in, in the newspapers. It's something like.
Yeah, we have to give them three, three days notice ahead and plus forty-eight hours to the public. So it's my five.
And this is something.
Can I, can I make a comment at all?
Yes. You can have the discussion now if you would like.
Yeah, Trustee Powell, go ahead.
To there.
What, uh, for a special meeting?
Oh, yes. Okay.
Can I make any comment at all?
Yes, I don't know.
You do that now because you have to get it set up. That's what you just said.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Lance, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is highly embarrassing and deeply humiliating. I just have to say that. I don't think we know what we're doing. I don't think as a board, the board members know what their roles are. And I'm just gonna be, just say, I think this is becoming partisan. It's personal. School board only hires a superintendent. We don't run the school district. How many times do we have to go over this? Pride as a right to hire who he wants to run the district. Stop giving the superintendent a hard time. We're not the superintendent. Let's say this over, over, over again. Times do we say, if you don't like something, off the agenda? Over, and we're like little kids. Out, embarrass the district or embarrass the people that are applying here. Wrong with us? Up, off the agenda. Let's take it off. We get here where we embarrass the people that are applying to a district, where we need qualified people to work here. Shame on us. Understand something, speak to the superintendent before, and if we don't, fansence us, take it off. People and then we embarrass them. Who are we to embarrass educators? We're not educators. Not the superintendent. Qualified to do the work they do, but yet we act like we know it all. We don't know crap. Word members. Qualified position we have, we don't run a district. And that. Shame on us. Just have to say, it's embarrassing. Over and over and over again. People are sitting in the audience waiting to be hired and we embarrass them. Take it off the agenda, wait until the next meeting, you take, let's take it off. It's embarrassing.
Uh, Doc, and the only thing I will say in closing, Dr. McBride, if the rationale to put it in January is because according to they said, they, you know, according to what is said, they think they have a quorum and they're going to run the district, please reach out to the commissioner and then you just let him know that you have a hostile board that you're dealing with. They're not willing to abide by the rules that we're governed by and that is the end of the story. This is not acceptable. We don't do these things to people. We don't do these things to employee.
Quiet for a moment.
Terrible.
We are.
I would never apply here if I was looking for.
Hang on, Lance, Lance, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get everybody quiet. We're going to reconvene in executive session.
I'm not going to executive.
Okay, then.
There is a motion on the floor.
I motion to move forward.
Okay, then, okay, so we will see seven.
Second.
Oh, my God.
Roll call.
Okay, so the roll call is.
What are, what, what is the roll call?
This is, this is for personnel.
Whether we go into executive session again or not?
Nope.
What is it for?
They refused, so this is just personnel.
Personnel, so tabling C seven.
Okay, tabling C seven and you're voting on personnel.
Right, removing V one, nine and seventeen still from our earlier conversation.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so Mr. Carroll? You're voting on personnel, we move with, with C seven being tabled and you're moving.
Sorry. Yeah, all except eight, ten, I just abstained because I'm not on personnel and I I don't have enough information. So I'm staying from eight turn.
What's eight turn? What is eight turn, lady?
That is the executive director of curriculum and instruction.
That's what replaces Ms. Cosmark, Dr. Cosmark?
Correct.
So why, why are we abstaining from a job description?
Can I continue?
No, just, just let's continue.
Okay.
Because I.
Can I continue?
Yes, just continue.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
Abstain.
Abstain from all?
Oh, I'm sorry, from eight, ten and then the rest goes.
Uh, Mr. Martin? Mr. Powell?
Hi, uh, yes, go forward to hiring someone. We need someone.
No, you're voting on personnel.
Just the whole personnel agenda.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Pringle? Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Cordier Alton?
Uh, I'm saying yes, however, I am personally abstaining from H. Thank you.
H.
H five.
Okay, I'm just gonna mark it down. So Ms. Cordier Alton, yes, abstain from eight, seven.
H.
H is H. H is H. And Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one, two, three abstentions. For eight, ten, so that means eight, ten passes. And so the ones that tabled is tabled, and what else you're?
Uh, B one, nine, and seventeen were removed?
B nine, one, and seventeen.
Yep.
So the rest of the motion passes.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, there's no policy, so we'll move on to curriculum. Uh, trustee Stein, you wanna read what, I mean, um, Martin, read what was prepared for you?
I'd like to make a motion, C one to C twenty-one, highlighting C eleven. Approve an agreement with the Hackensack Servinian Schools of Medicine, allowing medicals. Medical school students to work in the district, schools to support curriculum, additional family program, and. Student health education support for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is no cost to the district for this partnership. The project posed for the school, for this school year, uh, health education classes. Presentation, work with the medical club and medical classes at. Hackensack High School and supporting family programs at Jackson Avenue School. Other activities can be planned and added to this. Only what has been started or discussed. And highlighting C fifteen, approve the proposal between the Hackensack Public Schools and. Hackensack, uh, uh, and HMH Education Company to a, a provider pilot. For the research basic ESL program, English three D for pulling out ESL students. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The total cost for eight hundred and eighty-nine students, not to exceed fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six and twenty cent. This pilot agree, agreement includes English three D for grades K through three, which provide. Research basic LED instructions for young multilingual learners. The pilot also include a curriculum for multilingual learners in grade four through twelve, who are newcomers. Or in later beginning proficiency level, designed for rapid. Designed for rapid of social academic levels.
Thank you, um, we have a motion.
I have a question.
We, we're gonna have a discussion in just a moment.
Okay.
Um, when we get a second, um, we have a motion from trustee Martin, can I have a second? Mr. Carroll, thank you, now, uh, Mr. Stein.
On, uh, C fifteen, what does that mean to pull out students that follow one? Are they being asked to go out of their classroom to go to another classroom or?
I also have a question for C fifteen, since she's, um, for C fifteen. Will, for this position, will we need to hire another person? Are the ESL teachers going to be doing this pro, this pilot program, pulling out our students? Like, will this be run, can you speak in the microphone? Thank you.
I just want a definition of what it means to pull out.
That's the second, that's the second.
Yep.
Third, third something.
At the elementaries, our ESL teachers pull out the students. Um, because the law is ESL must take place during the school day. Cannot take place af, outside. At the middle school, an ESL class is a standalone class. It's within the child's schedule, but in the elementaries, we have four ESL teachers that. Um, pull out the students. If I'm a full-time bilingual student, I stay in my class. Because my, the bilinguals teacher is ESL certified, so can deliver the service inside. But if I speak Turkish, or I'm in a sheltered instruction class, I'm not in a bilingual. Then the, a certified ESL teacher that is in every school pulls out. The, the student, so the pilot program, it's not, it's not about staffing, the, we have the staff. Uh, it is just about, um, uni, having uniform materials across the four schools. And all the way up to twelfth grade for newcomers.
Thank you.
All right.
The classroom teacher is the one that's going to pull up those same student, right? No, there's a new, there's a new, there's a teacher designated to do this pilot program, is what I'm asking.
So the ESL teachers will do.
Okay, so our teachers that we already have.
Yes, no new staff is being hired for this position, you're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? Ready for roll call? All right, this thing?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Corduro Alton?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, moving on with finance, Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I make a motion to move D one through D six. Highlighting D six. Which approves the middle school partnering with Good R and the center. For good action to provide free groceries to fifty middle school families in need. Seven to ten, ten days worth of, uh, in a total, approximate wholesale value of four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Pop-up market event will be held at the middle school parking lot on December seventh, ten to one P M.
All right, uh, we have a motion from Mr. Carroll, can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Pringle, um, any, uh, discussion on those? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, yes, but I abstain from code number five, five, six, one. You want the check number or is that?
Five line item?
The district is paying me for a, a trip.
Oh, oh, I got it.
And I abstain from that particular item.
Yes, okay. Ms. Corduro Alton?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Mr. Carroll, buildings and grounds?
Builders and grounds, I make a motion to move E one through E seven. Highlighting E three and E six, E three is, um. Approving the following reses, resolution for submission of comprehensive maintenance plan. And in one form, which is a man, which is mandatory. And, uh, was due on eleven fifteenth and has already been submitted.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Carroll, can I have a second? Thank you, uh, trustee Pringle, uh, roll call, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
E six, after E six, I highlight E six also.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And E six is, uh. What we have, uh, E six approves Districtwide Asbestos Hazardous Emergency Response Act. Right to Know, Air Quality Management, Public Employees Occupational Safety. And Health Hazard Communications Standard Training, Mold Chemical, Chemical and Biological Testing. Lead and Water Testing from Carlin Environment, this is also mandatory as well. That's it.
All right, um, so we, thank you, we got a motion, we had a second, now any discussion of those items? All, all right, so roll call, please.
Yeah, Ms. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Somerville?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Corduro Alton?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, uh, nothing to report from community relations, uh, any new business? All right, uh, board comments, Mr. Stein?
Oh, thank you, um. Just would like to say, a, as I think everybody saw tonight, our kids are the best.
Yeah.
Um, their presentations tonight were about the Hackensack comic community. Um, and I think that's wonderful. But getting a little more, more serious. Board members take on a very big load. Contrary to other forms of government, we are held to a code of ethics. For school board members. There are ten codes that we must follow. Um, two of them I'm gonna recognize tonight. And it basically says that I, as all board members. Recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises. To take any private action that may compromise the board. And F says, I, as well as other board members. Refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups. To use the schools for personal gain. What troubles me is that we've had, we have two trustees. Who've gone on by themselves without board permission. To negotiate with the city council. That's above and beyond what our ethics code says. How does that fit into put, uh, to personal gain? I guess they were looking for votes to say, look at us. We have championed a new school for Hackensack. Well above what they are allowed to do. I guess the public read through it because they didn't get any personal gain in votes. And Mr. Powell raises questions about the independence. We all have, as board members, independence to voice our views. We're American citizens, but we're trustees on this board. And we have the right to question, and we have the right to make opinion on our views. So for him to say, this is a disgrace, is well beyond the purview of any board member. Some board members, I guess, should look in the mirror and reflect back on the code of ethics. That they have sworn to uphold. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, very well said. Uh, I'd like to also, uh. Commend, uh, Mr. Montesano on a, uh, and, and the, and the kids. On a, uh, a beautiful, uh, presentation and, uh, putting together the, uh, clubs. The clubs, uh, that are together that he, uh, along with the, uh, advisors. They have, um, is, uh, is gonna be, it's a good idea, and it's gonna help the, uh, students along the way in the future. So again, Mr. Montesano, you brought the good work. Uh, I know you loved your job, I know you loved your school, and, uh, and I know you love the students. As well as your administrative team, uh, who was doing a great job there at the high school. Thanks again for all you do. Um, also, um, Thanksgiving, I like to say Thanksgiving Eve, the day before Thanksgiving. Um, the Hackensack Rotary, Teaneck Rotary will be doing a luncheon. Which, uh, been doing this luncheon for the last twenty, thirty years with, um, a joint. Luncheon with Teaneck, uh, in Teaneck, uh, uh, since Teaneck only be hosting the game. The, uh, Teaneck Rotary will be hosting the luncheon. And it's, uh, the luncheon is consist of the, uh, football players, that the captains of the football team, that the, uh, captains of the. Cheerleading team, uh, the, the captains of the band, and, um, um, the, uh, the, uh. Administrators, principals, um, superintendents from both schools will all come under one roof. Uh, under that one roof, we, uh, we tried as adults to let the students know that. Is a united, we is, uh, this is the longest rivalry that, um, uh, in New Jersey. It would be ninety-two years, I believe. And, uh, it's a celebration for both teams. And, uh, and this luncheon that we break together and, and explain to the kids, um. Um, that we walk the halls and we played on the, those, uh, football team as well as with the, uh, uh, special, um. Teams as well, so it's a, it's a great event, and, um, uh, we're looking forward to that luncheon. Um, also, no, yeah, and that's it, um, that's all I have, and wish everyone, um, a great evening.
Thank you, um, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, um, thank you trustee Stein and, uh, trustee Martin, um, for your, uh, comments. Um, I wanted to thank Shanika Thomas, uh, for her report. Um, and for bringing up the Thanksgiving Day game, uh, again, ninety-two years as our tradition, I didn't know it was ninety-two years, but. Um, definitely a tradition, since it's going to be in Teaneck, we need to make sure we flood those bleachers with blue and gold. Um, regardless of how the weather is, because I heard it's gonna be in the forties, um, the prediction, right? Uh, the prediction was gonna be in the forties, um, Mr. Montesano and your team, a phenomenal job. Um, getting these students prepared to not only talk about their club, but show their passion in those clubs. I really loved how specific these clubs were, the medical club, the comic ambassadors, and. I didn't realize, you know, how involved they are in the community and how, how well. I mean, you have to really wanna do it, right? You, you don't just do it because someone's telling you, they're doing it because they want to help. And that just shows what type of students we're producing in Hackensack. And these are the students that eventually, and we hope, right, that they'll come back and give back to our community, so. Um, huge, uh, thumbs up, applause, um, to the high school team. You guys are doing a great job keeping up with these, um, clubs and, uh, as advisors. Um, I also know since tomorrow is the eighth grade orientation, I hope you guys also highlight those same clubs, which I'm sure you will. Um, so I look forward to seeing that. Um, also, being that we're in the holidays, um, you know, there's a lot of happy times. During the holidays, and there's also a lot of times where we need to be mindful of people who might be going through things, especially. Um, after losing a special someone, um, to, to open your doors or to open your hearts to these people, to be mindful of them. Um, sometimes they don't know where to go, uh, you know, just be mindful of students who have families that they have one less. Uh, seat at the table during the holidays, um, you know, just give that. Just that support, or, or direct our students to the right place where they need to go, even, even teachers, adults as well will need that support. Um, but being that on the positive side, um, there's a lot of things to be grateful for here in our district, and I'm glad that we. We had the presentation of the students, something definitely that we should be grateful for, uh, that I am grateful for. Um, also, I'm grateful for the Hackensack community as a whole. Um, the Hackensack community came out in full-blown on election day. Um, the Hackensack community came out in numbers to vote for people who they feel are the right people. For our students and for our staff, and I am beyond grateful, beyond grateful. Um, and honored to serve again for a second term here in my district. Um, for having a, us, another second term, and historic numbers were casted. And numbers don't lie, right? We talk about data, we talk about, um, these numbers. And the people came out and they spoke. I want to also shout. I want to also shout out my, my running mates, Leila Amrahamsa and Eugenia or Gina Gilmore. They're going to be a great asset to our board and I look forward to seeing them in January. Happy Thanksgiving and have a good night.
Mr. Powell?
Thank you, President Vickery. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone coming up. President Vickery, I have a question for you in regards to Mr. Stein comments. Regarding saying we went rogue to the council, so, so everyone can go on the record. You authorize myself, I'm in Somerville, just like you have the Committee Relations Board and you appointed people on it. I'm not on that board. They represent us. If you ask me, the city council in regards to the meetings, did you, did I go by myself? Did you authorize myself, I'm in Somerville, like, oh, you had the board for the Committee Relations? Then you speak on that for a minute, please.
I, I Community Relations.
No. What I'm
You're cutting in and out, so I'm having a hard time hearing what he What's the question? Because I'm trying to question.
His President Scott James Vickery, his basic question is what Mr. Stein's statement said is a true statement? That somehow there was a secret negotiation between two random board members to the city council to effectuate political gain?
Got it. Okay. Yeah, no, there were, there was no secret negotiating happening at all. There was no secret negotiating happening.
To go to the city council and have that meeting. That's what he said.
That's the question that Lance is asking.
Anything that's happened has been above board, yes.
No, no, no.
Hello?
Was that you authorized
Scott? Hello?
To the city council to have that meeting. So he, he wants you to remember stamp that.
Rob, Rob.
He's on the joint committee.
My, my
Yes.
Can I continue?
It's read the draft.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yes, he's on the joint committee.
Right.
Chairman of Buildings and Grounds or myself as a person of the Buildings and
Can I continue?
There's a specific
Yes, Lance, continue.
My phone died. I'm sorry. I apologize, Scott. So as I was saying earlier, Mr. Stein, I didn't take the initiative by myself. This first came about when Mr. Carroll made a suggestion that someone need to work with the city council. The president authorized us to work with the city council. And that's what we did. So this didn't come out the hat for election. Working with the city council, trying to get a school for our kids is a collective thing. We're trying to help the kids. It has nothing to do with an election. Even if going forward, anything I can do to help, continue to help the kids. Help the kids before I got on the board and will continue to do that. But I wanted to clarify this to you, Mr. Stein, and the public, that it was the president who worked with the city council. Gladly obliged and I gladly did. So I kind of wanted to clear that up. And the president can speak to that, Mr. Vickery.
Is that it?
No, I just, I just want you to clarify to Mr. Stein.
But, but my point is, is we have, yes, you were assigned to the joint city board committee all year.
Correct, all year. Nothing to do with an election, Mr. Stein.
I mean, that's the function of, that you were assigned to.
Mr. Stein, you're staying corrected, okay? That's what we did. Even the board that's going to be there, we need to work with the city council to get a school for our kids. Our children needs the school. That's what I'm saying. And I was glad, thank you, President Vickery, to that position and I was happy to work with them. And they're glad that they're able to work with us to get a school for our kids. It's a win for us. Trying to help our kids get a school with the city council. It's a win. It was, it had nothing to do with an election, Mrs. Stein. So I just wanted to clear that up. The holidays are here. I hope everyone could go out and celebrate and have a wonderful time. The elections are gone. Whoever you are there, just work with the superintendent and do the best we can for our kids. All I have to say, but this, what we did to help our kids had nothing to do with an election, nothing at all. This is from my heart to help our kids. And, you know, people have different opinions and the battle lines are drawn. It's obvious. Work with the council, help our kids. Politics. The kids. I'm always going to be around helping our kids. I've been around the board a long time, helping our kids. Had nothing to do with the city council. And by the way, campaign, Mr. Stein, it had nothing to do with the city council. This is us just running. You won. We move on. And there's no sense to keep going back and bringing that up. Group one, we congratulate you. Move on and you do the job for the kids. That's all life is. Thank you, guys. Go out and do a good job. That's it. But enough is enough. We don't need to be like this. So, so devise it. That's all I'm saying. Move on and do what we can do for our community. And I was proud, thank you, President Vickery, for assigning us to work with the city council and I enjoyed it. Hope it bear fruits, we can get a new school for our kids. And thank you again for serving. Thank the Hackensack people for having me. And I'll be at the next meeting and I'll thank the community, thank the public for the time I've been there. And thank you all. Be safe. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pringle?
I'm proud of all the Hackensack students. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. Somerville?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. So I am just going to second what trust. I, I'm, I'm just disappointed. I, I can't even fake this. I'm just disappointed. Mr. Stein, that was petty. That was petty. That was shallow. That was small in nature.
Yeah.
It was nasty. It was mean. It was ill-tempered. And I'm just going to say, people who live in glass houses should not throw stones, right? So you would like to call people out. Would you like me to start doing the four-one-one on your behavior?
Maybe we should.
When you live in a glass house, please do not throw stones. You have no idea the amount of work we put in to try to get a school on behalf of our kids. The amount of hours spent at a table negotiating, walking through processes, coming up with solutions and options on behalf of children for you to sit there and talk about something to do with politics. Politics entered nothing into a conversation or a situation, but it just goes to show how small-minded and petty you are. And I don't mean that in stature. I mean that in personality all the way around. It's disgraceful. No one brought up anything about an election. What somebody wants to post had absolutely nothing to do with me. But instead of coming to the board and doing what you need to do, you're sitting there bringing politics in something that nobody else has done. So it goes to show you where your mindset is and where you are and what your action is. Maybe you should go back and read what you read to everybody else and maybe you should internalize it and actually practice what you preach. You're disgraceful. I had no point in time of ever, as an individual, reached out and attacked your character. Never uttered one word of disrespect about you or to you. But you chose an opportunity on a public mic in a public forum to try to hit below the belt.
Ms. Somerville, will you wait until we get all the trustees back to the table, please?
If they want to leave and they don't want to be at the table, President James Vickery, that is personally fine and okay with me. I appreciate everything that everybody in the community have done, all the support they have shown, and for them to act as adults when they come in the room. We're supposed to be here on behalf of kids. This board has just devolved into absolutely positively shameful behavior. And the community deserve better? Oh, God knows our kids deserve better. They do. They don't deserve this. They shouldn't have to put up with this. Nothing should function like this. And for those people that seem to think that this behavior is winning, that this behavior, that embarrassing people that come to the district for a job is a show of good behavior and fiscal responsibility. That trying to humiliate the superintendent at every turn is showing good governance. Right? In being blatantly, blatantly not in line with the edict that you signed when you came as a, you know, a volunteer to the board is good business practice. Shows why we can't move forward and why we're forever stuck in the cycle of running around in a circle chasing your own tail. The district deserve better. The kids deserve better. The teachers, every single person that show up in Hackensack every day on behalf of our kids and behalf of the community deserve better. They don't deserve this. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your vote. Thank you for everything that you guys have done, all the good wishes that you guys have done out there. And I give you guys back the same. Happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving. Take care, everybody. Please get home safely. Have a good evening.
Hello and good evening. I, I would just like to say again, because I know I say this often. I really love when our students come out here to present. It is such a treat for me to see littles who are now not so little. There were several students here this evening that I'm just so impressed and I just knew it was possible and that they would be student ambassadors for us. I've known them since elementary school, middle school, now high school. So when we all talk about the things that our children are capable of, tonight was proof positive that they absolutely are amazing. Sadly, tonight was also proof positive for me yet again that student achievement goals are non-negotiables. I will not. I will do my very best. I will continue to do my best. And I only hope that others take on that same exact responsibility and desire because that's what our district deserves. Most importantly, first and foremost, always our students. So again, student achievement goals are non-negotiable. Earlier in October, I had the opportunity to go to the NJ SBA workshop for twenty twenty-four. It was yet again a wonderful experience with lots of learning. Took my Governance Three class, so I know a little bit more now about negotiations and legal. Always very exciting and also being able to see people that you've been going to this same exact thing for the last two years and finding out how things are working in their district and new techniques. It was very exciting. I'm very appreciative and grateful to have had that opportunity. I look forward to it when it comes up. Another thing that happened at the NJ SBA workshop was John Quinones from What Would You Do? Was a presenter there. And one of the lines that I'm taking from him and I'm going to share it again here tonight, especially with our traditional Thanksgiving game between Hackensack and Teaneck is if you see something, say something. And I ask that all of our students in both districts and their families attending that game, be the student ambassador that we know you can be. Represent your community. It's just a game. Most important is that you get the opportunity to enjoy it. And the only way that that happens is if everybody is on their best behavior, respectful and pleasant. I hope that everybody enjoys Thanksgiving with family and friends. I'm sorry to those who maybe won't have that opportunity, but also realize that the alternative is not an option. So if you're here and you're able to celebrate the fact that you're here when others can't be, have a great evening, have a wonderful holiday. And I might be back in December. We'll see. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It was great to hear from our students. Happy Thanksgiving and I will reserve my comments for December. What are we doing? Ms. Pringle went. He fell asleep doing your comments. Ms. Pringle went.
I said
We, I heard. I was profoundly moved. I heard him.
And every, everything else, everybody's
Yeah, I heard. All right. All right. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Great. All those in favor say aye. Wonderful.